I invite you to join with me in the dedication. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer at a time when we celebrate the freedom the people of our nation enjoy and expect. We ask for protection of all people, our military and our leaders. In times of concern, we ask for acceptance and love of all individuals as you have created us as equal. Let us move beyond hatred and discord and show respect to everyone. Make us the eyes and ears of the community so that we hear and see what is needed and let us make decisions that encourages all to help one another. In your holy name we pray.
Amen.
Next is a special presentation. This month is Parks and Recreation Month, and I'm going to ask Lisa Kaiser to read the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and Mr. Rhodes. So it is July, so that means it is Parks and Recreation Month. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I have, you know, a few words, and then I want to recognize my staff that are here. So recognizing July as Park and Rec Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Albemarle, North Carolina; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks; and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature where positively, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's; and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities to, activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas Parks and Rec Recreation is a leader, provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education; and whereas Parks and Rec Month programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood, childhood development; and whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas Albemarle, North Carolina recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore be it resolved by Albemarle, North Carolina City Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Albemarle, North Carolina.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the proclamation.
So move.
Motion by council member. Drive, second by council member. Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Lisa, bring all your staff up and introduce.
Come on up, staff. So I just wanted to thank all of you for your support of our Parks and Recreation and what it does for our community. Our theme this year for Parks and Recreation is Where We Belong, and that just speaks to our mission and our vision that we are after, and also a lot in our strategic plan. So I have given you all a gift, a gift bag with lots of different promotional prizes that we have ordered lately and that will be given out to the community. We have lots of celebrations this month. Right now, we have our first scavenger hunt going on. We're doing staff profiles. Wednesday, we're having a staff luncheon just to recognize and appreciate our staff. And then this, so, and then Food Truck Friday. So thank you all, and thank these people because they are the backbone of what we do.
Introduce the nation.
Sure. We have Todd Sullivan, who's our park superintendent. We have Jordan Crisco, that's a park maintenance worker. Danielle Dobbs Jackson, who is the Assistant Park and Recreation Director. We have Ray Moore, who is a recreation supervisor. Cindy Burris, who is our administrative assistant. And then Leon Strickland, who is another park maintenance work, I'm sorry, park crew leader.
There you go. All right. Good job.
Thank you to all of them for what you did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Item number four, approval of minutes. Council consider approval of the following minutes, meeting minutes. June 17th, special open session. June 17th, regular session. June 17th, closed session for real estate. June 17th, closed session for personnel. And June 21st, special open session.
Hope approved.
Motion by council member Hall, second by council member Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I have no agenda adjustments. I'll move into unannounced delegations. Marquita Hamilton, 1634 East Main Street, Albemarle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pull that mic down for me, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ronnie Michael and city council members. I am Marquita Hamilton, a resident of 1634 East Main Street. I have been trying to get this matter taken care of since March. I think we was at a community meeting at the Waddell Center concerned about a garage in between the tire shop and a residence on Groves Avenue across from the fire department. There's some gentleman there and a female, and I think they have a child, too. I think they're using it as a masonry or brick mortar business. They're there all times of day, all times of night. I think the other night, my son came in. They were out there at 3:00 a.m., very messy, very disruptive. I think they're running wires through the residence of the people beside them illegally. But just want to know, what can you guys do moving forward to take care of this matter and take care of this situation? I've did complaints online. Nobody's contacted me, but I did get an email last week that something, it has been brought to someone's attention and that something may be done about it. But it, why is it taking so long? And I've reached out and complained since March, and here it is July.
So where was your first complaint made to?
I was at the Concerned Citizens Meeting at the Waddell Center, and I forgot the gentleman's name. He showed me how to go on, online.
Whenever I help my district community meeting.
Right.
She made the observation, and I think our public information officer took some information and brought it back to staff at that time.
And I did the complaints online. I think I've done three, maybe four or five complaints online, but now nothing's been done about it. So I figure I would come to a council meeting and see what can be done about it, or what can we do about this moving forward.
Ma'am, just for, just from my knowledge, if you would tell us the street, the numbers on the street again, and give us a couple of cross streets. Where are you located at?
I am located at 1634 East Main Street, right beside D's Taylor Shop.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the tire shop is on the corner.
Okay, got you.
Right around the corner. Also, I come about the tire shop as well. It's a, they have a trailer there, and it blocks the vision from Groves Avenue to East Main Street as well. It's been there for a while. I don't even think they use it, but that's my other complaint as well.
Thank you.
The, the building that she's talking about is, if you're looking east, is directly beside of that building, there's a brick, a rock wall that's gone up, some facade work around the front of the building. And I, do they, do they even have a building permit?
Not that I know of. Also, it's a Jeep there. I think it's people sleeping out there in that Jeep as well. It's not safe because I have grandkids, and we're out there sometimes in the yard. Our trailer has been stolen from them. My husband contacted them, and they brought it back. It's, we've been there 30 years. We've never had any issues and any problems until these people have came here.
Well, I personally, this is the first time I've heard about it. This sounds like something that planning and zoning, our utilities division and the police department ought to have some knowledge of, so.
Mr. Rhodes, do you know if it, if it meets, or the zoning is appropriate for the type of building that's there? I do not know. Ms. Robbins? Kevin would know.
It is zone commercial.
Think he needs to come up here.
Come on up.
They are making noise after hours. Sometimes my husband have to go over there at 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock at night, and they're shining car lights on the building, and sometimes it's turned toward the backyard of our house, and it's a disruption, and it's keeping us awake and bothering us.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts with that one. We did receive a comment earlier, by the way, today as well.
Yes, I did another one today. With photos as well.
Yes. There's a lot of different things going on there. It is zone commercial. They are allowed to operate as a commercial business there. However, there are some issues with there being two different properties, that wall encroaching on the other property. We've talked to them about that, about having to combine those two properties. Activities that are going on there after hours, after 10 or 11, whenever our ordinance states, if they're disturbing the peace with noise, shining lights, that kind of thing, that'd be the police department might want to have them come out and take a look at that. People are sleeping there. I'll let my staff know that. We weren't aware of that before, but we can go by and look.
They're sleeping in the vehicle in the back.
We'll have to go by there especially at night, either that or have police, police document it, or it's one of the two, so that we can, we know what's happening with that, too. They're not supposed to be sleeping there also.
If it's zone for business, sorry. They do not have electricity, and they don't have water. They have barred our hose and barred water from us before, but it was getting a little out of hand, so my husband asked them to stop. So now I think they're using the residence in the brick house beside them. They're using their water, and they have electrical wire underground using that residence's electricity as well.
That's something we can look at for building code violation if they're using electricity.
And just, just for the record, I don't want it to seem as though this is a new issue before us, because I have shared Ms. Hamilton's concerns ever since she brought it up initially back in March. She, I followed up in an email in March, and more recently, I think I sent something as late as last week in regard to the issues, some of, some of which she've already addressed here tonight, you know.
Yeah.
I do hope that in some manner, though, in listening to what she said, that nobody have followed up with her, whether it be planning and zoning, utilities, or something of that nature. When a citizen make a complaint, we shouldn't have that lapse in time without them hearing some feedback from some capacity level in the city. So we, we need to look into that.
Typically not. Typically, if they receive something that's valid concern from somebody, they're going to call at least the first time and double check with them on that. So if you haven't heard anything from one of my staff, then I apologize.
Can you check with the nuisance officer and get him to go out there and look? And if there is a wire, then if they're not willing to take it, then we would be able to hold that residence in violation and disconnect their fire, would we not?
Yes, absolutely. We weren't aware of a, any issues with the electrical there, so if it's underground, we'll have to, we'll have to look into that. I don't, they, trench it is?
Yeah, it's under, it's buried underground.
Ms. Hamilton, if you don't hear something from them, let us know.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to municipal calendars. Is any of your agenda? Anyone have any questions or comments?
We need to look at July 22nd. On the calendar, it says that we have a special meeting at 5:30 and then a regular meeting at 6:30 on July 22nd. I don't know that that's right. If it is, it's not in mind. I don't have it.
We do not have a special meeting at 5:30.
Does anybody else have that? If not, then we just need to take that off. And we also need to look at what we're going to do about Labor Day. Traditionally, we have used Tuesday. We have moved the Monday night to the Tuesday night. And I just, you know, this is June, I mean, this is July. We've got two months, and it may be that things are continued out, so I think it would be advantageous.
Is that a motion?
To do it on Tuesday, the 3rd.
Have a motion by council member Hall to move the Labor Day meeting to the next day on Tuesday.
Second.
Second by council member Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to the consent agenda. 9A, road closure for Sugar Hill Reunion. 9B, road closure for the back-to-school barbecue. 9C is an amendment to the agreement between the City of Alamo and Waste Management.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Aldridge to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by council member Drive. Further discussion?
Just like to commend Rossown finding that amendment, if you will, to the, to the agreement. Looks like it's going to be, by reading the small print, that may be some cost reduction. So thank you very, thank you very much.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to boards and commissions. We have two applications. One is Benjamin List for a full member to the Historic Resources, and the other is Elizabeth Landrum as an alternate one to the planning and zoning.
Move approval of both to the specific ones requested.
Motion by council member Hall.
Second.
Second by council member Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I would like, if at all possible, Christina, for the next meeting, for us to have any opens that we have left for us to be thinking about. If, if we could have that just as a reminder. If I remember correctly, there may be one open on Parks and Rec yet. And Lisa, do you know if that is, that person, is that a zoned one, or is that at large? And is it for anybody? Or do they have to be residents or not? Tell me that. You can? Okay. Use your mic, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that said, the ones that we reappointed at the last meeting, do we know if they were correct? I mean, if they were, okay.
I was thinking Mr. Baldwin represented Parks and Rec Committee on my, on my district, and we reappointed him at the last meeting. So it, it must not be my, my district.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, counsel, come around the table. Mr. Rhodes?
I just wanted to recognize city staff that was involved in making the fireworks display on July 3rd a success. We had a number of fire department personnel out there. Safety director, Chris Pogara, and fire marshal, Robert Willoughby, and many others. First fireworks display in a number of years, and it was a huge success from everything that I've heard. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Okay. And this, first, first and foremost, this is not a complaint, but I view it as an opportunity for improvement with us within the city. The interim city manager, he just talked about the great job on the fireworks. At past few meetings, we've discussed road closures, we discussed fireworks, but I think all the council received an email from me last week concerning the blasting for the new hotel. Now, I do have a concern there because I do know that that wasn't something that was planned overnight, because I've seen the blasting mats up there three or four weeks prior to the blasting taking place. Now, I'm not familiar with blasting standards, and the fire chief, fire chief and fire marshal, they have shared with me that readings were somewhat below the average for whatever they expect whenever they do blasting of that nature. But I can say by me having a property in that area, regardless of how, what distance the blasting per hour process, how, how, however distant they're supposed to notify whoever, I can say that I was, I wasn't notified, and some more residents in my area was not notified. And my property, every time they done a blasting, I can feel my house shake. Now, if we can put on our agenda for road closures and fireworks and things of that nature, I think we need to do a better job, especially, blasting is not something that's going to take place on a regular basis in the City of Alamo, but that's something that we need to improve our process on. You know, I don't think, unless, unless y'all knew about it, I definitely didn't know technically other than just seeing the blasting mats, what was taking place, you know. So we need to definitely look at our process and see what we can do, because if it shook my house, you know, the city got a large investment right, right next to me at the E. Waddell Community Center, so we should all have a concern there.
Do we know, Mr. Rhodes, if there's additional that's got to be done, or are they done?
Kenny, could you address that?
What I was told is there probably will be, because that part of the highway is nothing but rock. You know, when they built the new bypass, there was tons of rock. They done a lot of blasting then, and there may be more now, but they're going to have to get down to the level where the rock base is. So we'll know more about that later. The only other place that I know a lot of blasting is going to take place, and that's going to be in the business park. They done a lot in the business park when they, you know, when they put the road in. I did talk to the fire marshal quite a bit after. This is a permitted thing. You have to have a permit to do this. And just like the fire techniques, there's a lot of information that he has to gather from the blaster, we call it a blaster, insurance, site plans. We required the blasting mats. That's something that Robert put in place. The roads were closed. I cannot speak on the notifications, because the fire code says that the blaster is responsible for the notifications, and what I found out later was the blaster hired a third party, a third party to do the notifications. That didn't make me too happy. So we're going to take a stance at the fire department now. If we're issuing a blasting permit, we're going to do the same thing that we do for live burns. Live burns, we have to notify the neighborhoods. And so what we're going to start doing is notifying so far of a distance what the fire code says to do, and I think it's 500 foot, but it could be more. Do notifications like that.
Well, we, are we going to utilize social media, our Facebook, city Facebook? Can we, are we allowed to use, utilize that?
Well, yeah, we, we can. I don't see why we couldn't. We could give, with David to do a, do a post that we're going to be doing the blast. The thing is, is the fire code is pretty specific on notifications, and it says that the blaster has up to 24 hours. He, he only has to give us 24-hour notice. And this, that's what it says in the code. So, but Robert has been doing a good job and requiring a lot more, a lot more time leeway.
Yeah, I think if we could utilize our resources, social media, et cetera.
Yeah.
I think that would, you know, give the residents a better opportunity to get prepared and not be alarmed when they hear these things.
Yep. Thank you.
As we're improving.
Thank you.
We get it.
No further, Ms. Townsend?
That's it.
Mr. Ramlin?
I just to note, at the Wampus Cats game tomorrow night, the Stanley County Band is going to be doing the National Anthem. It ought to be a, a good show.
Thank you. Mr. Aldridge?
I just want to congratulate the Parks and Rec Department again for a great job. You know, I hadn't been able to attend all of the Food Truck Fridays we've had this season, but each time I've gone, it's been a really good, good thing to see their, the team. Lisa and her team out there doing a great job, and everybody seems to be enjoying it and having a good time. So thanks again, Lisa, for your leadership and to the, to the entire staff of, for all that you do for, not only the residents of Albemarle, but people coming in to visit our city on those, on those special occasions. The next thing I've got, Your Honor, is, Chief, I wanted to ask, I know July 1, the golf cart permits went live. Do you know approximately how many permits we've issued for that?
Yes, we've had one come in on Monday and one more on Friday.
Two permits.
Two.
Okay.
And no issues thus far.
Okay.
But we did turn one away that was not a golf cart, it was a low-speed vehicle.
Okay.
So just for the folks out there watching, it's got to go 20 miles an hour. We're less than a golf cart.
Okay. All right. Okay. And just a reminder, Food Truck Friday is this Friday, July the 12th, so hopefully everybody can make it. Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
I echo the comments about Parks and Rec. Been there and will continue to be there, particularly the work that you all have done, not just at Food Truck Friday, but with the Wampus Cats in town. This year compared to last year, the bathroom facilities, the whole, it looks so good. The mound looks good, the, everything looks good. And I will tell you during their time of about seven games in a row there, was a lot going on out there every night, and I was in the bathroom just checking things out. So I just say that that was one of the issues that I, that I've had and have had comments about, so you all have done a great job there. On to the Wampus Cats. They are playing tonight, and if we'd have been there tonight, it would have been the Stanley County Corral was singing tonight. So, and the concert band is tomorrow night. I will tell you that we have a lot of talent in Albemarle and in Stanley County, and there has been, and I know that Darren has been to many of those games. We have had live singers. We have had live folks singing every night. Some folks from here, some folks who have connections to Albemarle, so we've had that. Back again to Wampus Cats again, they've got six more games, and that's it. Tonight, tomorrow night, next, and then maybe it's just four more games. Maybe it is just four more games. So if you've not been, please go. Probably had about 900 people both inside the field and outside the field watching the fireworks. That was the last number that they were guessing. I will echo the atta boys and the thank you for all the folks that had anything to do with that. It was great. And one of the best things, if you hadn't seen David's videos that he made that night, one of the things that touched me the most was seeing these ballplayers on both teams after a very tiring game, laying on the field watching those fireworks, knowing that they were a part of this. So it was great. I would like to see us next year take a part financially in doing that. We, the city, did not do anything financially to help that. They, the Wampus Cats picked that up totally. So they wanted to do it, and they initiated it and followed through with it. So good for them. Noise ordinance. Chief, do we have a noise ordinance in town? And what time is that?
11.
So I hear 10, I hear 11, I hear, depends on the noise.
Yeah.
I was in Oakboro and got a, got a text from a citizen, and they said it's 11:30 such-and-such night and still going off. It might have been, I don't know if it's 4th or the 12th, I don't know when it was. I told them if they, if they thought there was an issue, they just needed to call the police department. So, you know, I guess another social media opportunity is just to occasionally put that out there, because, you know, folks, when they send something to me at 11:30 saying, "Is there?", I'm thinking, well, look it up or call the, call the police department.
Right. If it's music, loud music specifically is 10 o'clock.
I think this was.
There's a variety of other.
Gunshot, gunshot fireworks kind of thing. So, thank you. Last two things I would say is that the Addams Family, you worry, Players Addams Family will be opening week after next. It's two weekends in a row. Another opportunity for us to support our local arts. And I believe that is it. Thanks much.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drive?
And again, Lisa, thank you for a job well done. As you know, Parks and Recreation is a big thing with me, and that is going to require a lot more in the future with the way we're growing. People are going to expect more, so we all have our jobs.
Uh, people are gonna expect more, so, uh, uh, we all have our job cut out for us to ensure that we're accommodating those folks coming in, providing them with the recreational resources that they may be used to, but, uh, I feel like that we are, uh, moving into that area and we have good leadership and, uh, look forward to greater things happening within Parks and Recreation. And to, uh, everyone, I hope you had a good fourth and everybody's safe and, uh, we'll wait again to next year and do it again.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 3, 4, and 6. Consult with the attorney, economic development, and personnel. So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Dry. Second by councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.